Good morning. It's Tuesday, April 5th. At 9:30 AM, if you please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Okay, we've got minutes from March 29th.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Changes. Hearing that roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Now open to public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. I do want to make a public announcement. Today is the first day of early voting of our primary. Apparently primaries are so important, we have two of them this year. So, the history of our direct primary, 1906 was the first time that the Ohio voters had the ability to do a direct primary. Prior to that, political parties chose through closed doors, conventions, political bosses, and so forth. Since then, over 100 years, voters of the parties have the opportunity to nominate their candidates for the November ballot. But we also have issues on the ballot, and it's very important that voters remember. It's just not only about candidates, but it's also about issues in, of course, our Health Department levies on the ballot. Appreciate the voters taking the opportunity to review the facts about that and, of course, vote wisely in accordance with their conscience as well as their beliefs and obviously evaluating the benefit that the Health Department provides to the county. With that, we'll start with resolutions. County Engineer Dan Becker.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
Another important day today. It's ODOT's start of construction.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, heralding.
One resolution for your consideration today. Resolution accepting and awarding the 2022 Medina County pavement and cleaning repairs bid and then our weekly permits.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Next, Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer. Good morning, Jeremy.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
Only one resolution today, and that's authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with GPD Group for professional design services for the solid waste district's residential campus. And this would be to design the new scale house building and help with the permitting and spec-ing that building out.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeremy.
All right. And our facilities director, Stephen. How are you?
Good.
Good, good.
I have one resolution for your consideration today. Today is the agreement for architectural design and engineering services for the north staircase here at the administration building. Have a reboot.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Much needed.
Much needed.
Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Stephen.
Excellent. Thank you. And Holly Murin, our human resources director. We're just wrapping up, getting these things through.
Good morning, Holly.
Good morning.
Oh, she has two of them now.
I have five.
She has lots.
You actually get a bunch of them.
Yeah.
We actually have five. It's a big difference.
We'll get through it.
Our first resolution is approving our personnel changes. We have a new hire in sanitary and nine rate increases in sanitary. Our second resolution is approving the three-year contract between Teamsters Local 436, the lab technicians and sanitary engineering department. The third resolution is approving a three-year contract with Teamsters 436 line maintenance employees in the sanitary engineering department. Fourth resolution is approving a three-year contract between Teamsters Local 436 water distribution employees in the sanitary engineering department. And the fifth and final is approving the three-year contract between SEIU Local 1, representing the sanitary engineer wastewater treatment plant personnel.
I'll make a motion to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussions?
Good to get them done.
They're almost all finished.
Yeah, that's great. All right. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job, Holly.
Amy Lyon Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have eight resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2022 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third is cash transfer for various funds. The fourth is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The fifth is approving the transfer of Medina County inventory between various Medina County offices. The sixth is authorizing the submission of a grant application for a Family First Council operational capacity building fund grant. The seventh is allowing expenses of county officials. And the eighth and final resolution is approving claims for the week in the amount of $5,830,169.13.
I'll make a motion to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Amy.
Very good. Thanks, Amy. Next, department updates. Denise Testa with our Planning Services Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
So, we've had our second meeting with the subdivision regulations work group. You will, as part of commenting agencies and townships and planning commission, you will receive our recommended revisions for the first three articles. We already made it through. So, and everyone that has started is still on the work group, so that's a good sign. For our April agenda for the planning commission, which is tomorrow, we have three subdivisions that we're reviewing in Liverpool, Wadsworth, and Medina Townships, and two text amendments, one in Guilford and one in Harrisville. For April concept plan meetings, we have, we will review a subdivision in York and a subdivision in Liverpool, which is very exciting. For our May agenda, we have a Hinkley Township map amendment that we will review as well as a subdivision in Brunswick Hills. So, very excited about that. Regarding our community development block grant, Lafayette Critical Infrastructure, that is the replacement or removal and replacement of a box culvert near Chatham Lake on Main Drive and the pavement of Main Drive just off of Lake Road where the old amusement park used to be. So, I'm pleased and very thankful to Lafayette Township for approving an allocation of $90,000 for that project. Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer approved $50,000. The county is part of our administration funds. We are allocating that towards the construction fund for $30,000, bringing the total county contribution to $80,000. And, of course, the CDBG money of $389,800, bringing our total funding available for that project of $530,800. And with the rising costs of materials as well as the delay in materials and supplies, we're very thankful for those allocations. We're also very thankful for Dan Becker from the county engineer's office, who is creating the bid documents. For the box culvert will go out this Thursday and followed by the bids for the paving of Main Drive in a couple of weeks. So, Dan, thank you very much. You have been a great team member. We also will continue with some professional development opportunities in our office, so we're very excited to embark on those journeys as well. So, with that in mind, are there any questions?
How wide is the culvert going to be? Is it two lanes each way or just one?
I believe it's...
Two lanes.
I was gonna say 20 foot, so however many vehicles you can fit in 20 feet.
Depends on how big the vehicle is, right?
That's my...
Exactly right. That's exactly right.
Most four-lane ones are 10 foot, so you should be able to pass two vehicles.
Two cars.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
All right. And there is a small, like, concrete pad that also crosses that kind of stream that runs through there. And that's like a walking bridge. So, we've talked with the engineers about that, and they've said that walking concrete pad, I'm really not sure what to call it, is going to remain. So, it's actually in pretty good shape, but the bridge is failing tremendously, so.
Good. Good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Open up for public comment.
Laura.
Oh, I'm sorry. Laura Toth, I did jump right past you. Sorry about that. Office for older adults. I apologize. I know.
Good morning.
Good morning, Laura.
First, I want to thank Denise and that community effort to pave that area in Chippewa Lake. We have a lot of seniors that live back there. They get home-delivered meals. We have drivers that can't get back to deliver those meals because of the condition of the road. Speaking from personal experience, because I drove that route last week, it's a little bit challenging in a Ford Focus. Maybe it's not as challenging in a four-by-fours, but in my Ford Focus, it was a little challenging. So, that's very exciting. Thank you. I am happy to start by providing you with copies of our annual report. I also brought some copies to leave here at the commissioner's office. Per Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging Grant Requestment, we've always been provided to... Or we've always been required to provide an annual report. So, typically, that's me just typing up statistics that I reported to you regularly, so I never really presented anything. But this year, we decided to jazz it up quite a bit. It's beautiful. Thank you. We're really proud of it. We're pleased to highlight both our recreational activities and our services in the community. I don't talk here a lot necessarily about, you know, the things that take place day-to-day in the center. But just if I could highlight the back cover, and this is for 2021. So, during COVID, we had 347 people that participated in day trips, going out and about in the community and in organized day trips. We had 412 people at the Medina Center participate in large group activities. We had that huge picnic luau on the lawn, I called it, last year, and parking lot bingo and things like that. And then 199 participate in the large group activities in Brunswick, and that included also things like parking lot bingo. So, we had a lot of people participating in events. And again, when a lot of things, especially at the beginning of '21, were locked down. So, I'll be really excited to see our numbers for '22, and I expect a really large jump. This is for your review. I also have our newsletters for Medina and Brunswick, which cover activities for April, for March, and April, that I wanted to hand out to you as well. We are confirmed at the Medina County Fairgrounds for Senior Day 2022, which will take place on Tuesday, May 17th, from 9:00 to 12:00. Our theme will be the roaring twenties, so we'll see what kind of flap or outfits we can all come up with before May. Also, this is, again, a community effort. The fair board had an event happening on that Sunday, and they have committed to clean up after that event. And then we were able to get some residents of the Medina County Jail to come in that Monday and help us set up tables and everything. So, it's really bringing together several agencies to get this going on the 17th. But that should be a great event. I'll talk a little bit more about that next month.
So, it's gonna be inside?
It will be inside.
Not gonna be driving, right?
Yes, and we already have 50 vendors signed up, which is amazing for this time of year. We have about 100 seniors. Our capacity is 500, 100 vendors and 500 seniors. And also, because of a foundation donation, it's free, which hasn't been free in the past, so we're expecting...
Wow, that's awesome.
Yeah, the full 500. Yeah, I presented it to the foundation and said, for $2,500, everybody can come to Senior Day for free. And they're like, okay. So, it was great. Our Compassion in Action program is getting stronger. This is the Faith in Action program that we have adopted and are running. We're providing regular transportation trips for medical appointments, groceries, other needs. We also continue our Shop for a Senior program, where volunteers will go to Bueller's and shop for seniors and deliver those groceries. The volunteer coordinator has created a user guide and a volunteer manual and handbook. And we've also joined the National Volunteer Caregiver Program, which, this is like, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. They have all kinds of online trainings for new volunteers, so that'll take care of time commitment for us that we don't have to provide and also really worthwhile and well-put-together trainings to initiate volunteers. The restaurant voucher program in Wadsworth is at capacity. This is quite a feat, considering we just got it up and running January 1. The Wadsworth Older Adults Foundation has contributed $5,000 to help us offer more vouchers to individuals every month. It defrays the cost of the program, and then we have levy dollars that we use to supplement that as well. Western Reserve does allow grant dollars for the voucher program, but that total is about $14,000, and that program's probably a $25,000 to $30,000 program. Also, our congregate meals in Medina are booming, speaking of eating inside together. We've been serving about 20 people per congregate day. That's up to 12, we were at like 12 or 14 before the pandemic, so it's really grown. It's a welcome change. I love having the dining room full when I walk through. And again, we're supplementing that grant with levy dollars. I wanted to mention personally, while I was up here, we have two regular driver openings and one intermittent driver. So, we have a couple of people coming in, but if anybody is interested, I hope they'll contact the office. Finally, the Medina County Senior and Adult Foundation is hosting our inaugural Giving in Style event. The fashion show and brunch is taking place Saturday, April 23rd, from 11:00 to 1:00 at Waymouth Country Club. Commissioner Swedick has graciously agreed to be the emcee for the event, and you'll definitely recognize some of our models, I promise. We will have raffles, silent auctions, and a giving tree, and tickets are $50 and are available by contacting me. Any questions? A lot going on.
That was the fashion show that Faith in Action used to do, wasn't it?
No, they did Dancing with the Stars, so this is new to us. I believe that the Board of DD used to do some kind of fashion show, either that or the Society. But that hasn't come back post-COVID.
All right, very good.
Well, do want to point out, we have, and you can see there's a lot going on away, and we have an advisory council, agency disability, and that meet monthly, and we're looking for volunteers. We do have openings representing the villages.
Yes, and the townships.
Yeah, go ahead.
And we also have one at large position, so.
Right, so if you're interested, you don't have to be a senior. Maybe you have to know a senior, that's fine, but you don't have to be a senior to serve on it. It's great. Last time, we got all these donuts and bagels and everything.
Promise and donut.
I know, I know.
They might have...
But it's good get-around, but also helps review the programs and make an opportunity to have some input for a lot of positive things that are going on for seniors, so.
And we hear about new programs for seniors as well.
Yeah, indeed.
Commissioner Hambley is the representative from the board that comes to those meetings, so there's always a lot of good information. If you're interested at all, let me know. I didn't think I had time to mention that, so thanks so much.
That's all right. All right, very good. Thanks.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you. All right. Now, we'll open it up to public comment. Please step forward. You might give us your name and address, please.
Right. Kathy Jones, Sharon Township.
Oh, I guess we have a group?
They are all gonna have something to say in the public time, so. Okay, good morning, commissioners.
Sure.
I'm here to speak to you about House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171, which have passed will allow oil and gas waste to be sold as a retail product without any requirement for testing or radioactivity or appropriate labeling concerning the possibility of radioactivity. In September of 2021, I gave you a packet containing information about the testing done on Aqua Salina, which showed high levels of radiation, which exceeded Ohio's safe limits. I asked you to please forward a letter to the Ohio Senate and Ohio House voicing your opposition to allowing Aqua Salina to be made a commodity. Commissioner Hambley, at that time, told me it was too early to forward any opposition. Well, I think the time is up now, so I'm gonna pass this to you. It's, it's gone down. Athens County Commissioners, March 22nd, passed a resolution and sent it onto the House and Senate saying their opposition to House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171. So, with that, I'm going to read a proposed resolution that we put together for the Medina County Commissioners to hopefully sign, and I'll read it to you right now. And you can, you might want to read this or look it over as I'm reading it to you.
Give you five minutes here, but go ahead.
Okay, I know. Sometimes you have people run over. That's why I'm gonna rush through this, reading it fast. Okay. Resolution opposing House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171. Whereas Medina County Commissioners are aware of the Ohio Department Natural Resources test confirming seriously high levels of radium 226 and 228 in all and oil and gas brine from conventional and unconventional oil and gas production wells. And whereas oil and gas waste are used on some of Ohio roads as a de-icer, dust suppressant, and as a result of oil and gas waste may enter the soil, retract into homes, and/or become airborne radioactive dust. And whereas the passage of House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171 would allow oil and gas waste to be sold now as a retail product without any requirement for testing for radioactivity or appropriate labeling concerning the possibility of radioactivity or other health hazards. Whereas the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Director Mary Mertz has stated the passage of House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171 does not ensure the protection of public health and safety or environment. Under House Bill 282, Senate Bill 171, the commodity would be exempt from any and all references to brine in the law. By creating the commodity exemption, legislation creates public safety concerns by doing all of the following. It eliminates requirements for a person or entity who wishes to spread brine deemed a commodity to notify their local Board of County Commissioners. It eliminates the requirement that local governments who wish to spread brine deemed a commodity on the roads they own or control to a first vote for adoption of a resolution. It eliminates the requirement to use registered brine haulers for surface application of oilfield brines. It eliminates the requirements of bonding and insurance for liability insurity purposes that is required of brine haulers, and it eliminates all regulatory authority over oilfield waste that would be classified as a commodity, including tracking and safety protection. And whereas the Medina County Commissioners recognize that clean water and air are essential for life, prosperity, sustainability, and the health of our community, and that damage to water, air, and property causes tangible loss to health, property, and the life of individuals, agriculture, animals, pets, communities, and ecosystems. Further, we take seriously our responsibility to protect our citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that the Medina County Commissioners hereby oppose House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171, and we respectfully request that the chairs of the House Energy and Natural Resources Committee and Senate Agricultural and Natural Resources Committee not bring those bills to a vote in their respective committees, and further that House Bill 282 and Senate Bill 171 not become the law of Ohio. So, the ask is, I'm speaking on behalf of Medina County residents that are here now and in the future. I'm asking you to sign the resolution so as to protect our water, soil, air, and nature. In doing so, you would be protecting the health and safety of the residents of Medina County, which you all took an oath to protect. Any questions?
No, I see pretty much the same resolution that Athens County.
We, it's tweaked a little. We tweaked it a little, and I ran it by an attorney too, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to reiterate, earlier in September, you told me that it was too early and that you typically didn't get in touch with the legislature to tell them how you wish to vote or whatever. Well, in the past, you've done three times, three separate resolutions. The commissioners have expressed their opinions, both pro and con, to the state legislature. Those were bills, House Bill 123 and...
Oh, yeah, those are ones that are actually moving through.
Well, this is moving through. This is near a vote now, so it's important that...
We'll take a look at it.
It's very important. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else wanted to speak?
Just one other thing. We put a flash drive for you, so it'll make it easier for you to put on your letterhead and app. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll pass it on and get it back to you. You can pick it up later then. Would you please, your name, address, please?
My name is Mary Emhoff. My address is 5065 Foxhaven Drive in Brunswick Hills. So, I really support this declaration and that you send it to our representatives in the state of Ohio. There are places currently using it on the roads in Ohio, and you cannot... Although a lot of the cities and communities within Medina County have stopped using it, they used it in the past. It is only because they are required to track it and inform you that they're using it that we know that it was used in our county. And everybody crosses the Medina County line and will track it on their tires in their car into their driveways, into their homes for their children and grandchildren to be exposed to. And the runoff, if you never left your home, the runoff gets into our ditches, streams, and eventually the Great Lakes. We have recently heard of Chernobyl back in the news, a city abandoned because of radioactive waste. It is accumulative and it cannot be cleaned up, so stop, don't even put it down. That's... It will be there 1,000 years from today, affecting the health of people, animals, fish, algae, bacteria. It's a foolish mistake to put it down. There are a few companies who would benefit from it, and they are pushing this. It's just incredible that it's gotten this far. So, I'm asking you to speak for Medina County, the people who live here, and I want to let you know that if I were in your place, I would sign this and send it to our representatives in the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, your name and address, please.
My name is Pauline Chapman at 7328 Worcester Pike in Seville.
Thank you.
I definitely want you to sign this because I live right on Route 3. My water well is in the front of my house, and if this runoff gets into my water, my health is gone. I've enjoyed good health for 77 years. I don't want to give it up now, just because somebody wants to make a quick buck. We all know that in, we had a Clean Water Act until 2002, when Mr. Halliburton, Dick Cheney, and Bush were in office. They tweaked that so that before then, we couldn't frac. So, fracking started then, and we all see the dangers that it opposes now. I just don't think it's a good idea. It's hazardous. It will always be hazardous.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Raymond Herbst, and I live at 282 Highland Avenue in Wadsworth.
Thank you.
I've been practicing and registered environmental health, public health specialist in the state of Ohio for 31 years. Registered Environmental Public Health Specialist in the United States for 21 years. And I regularly travel through all parts of Medina County year-round. I speak in support of the resolution that Kathy Jones presented to you. I endorse this resolution for distinct reasons. As you are our local representatives, the legislation that is presently before the Ohio House and Ohio Senate as Bill 282 and Bill 171 makes a surreptitious sleight-of-hand definition change to brine, establishes a huge loophole as it pertains to Ohio Revised Code Section 1509.226, and then takes away the voice of the county commissioners on this subject matter as a result. Testing by the state of Ohio shows that brine is, as a general matter, highly radioactive. I have over 150 samples taken from 150 different sources of Ohio gas and oil fracking brine. 148 samples exceeded environmental discharge limits, and all samples exceeded federal safety drinking water standards. Included in brine are arsenic, radium, lead, benzene, and toluene, just to name a few items. And the Ohio House and Senate bills look at only 15 total chemicals or compounds out of more than 1,000. Places tremendous commercial business pressure on the chief of the Division of Oil and Gas Resources Management to speak to the safety of the entire brine mixture for its application on roads and its effect on public health. And as you know about tracking the stuff into your home, when you look at arsenic, lead, and radium, you won't necessarily be able to see those depending upon the color and texture of your flooring or carpet. In these bills, the product that is used on the road needs to be on the... In these bills, the product that is used on the road needs to be on the Pacific Northwest Snowfighters Qualified Products List. The problem is, the Pacific Northwest Snowfighters no longer have ownership of the Qualified Products List, or QPL. Company that now has ownership of the list is quote "Clear Roads," unquote. Ohio is a member state of Clear Roads. If member states' testing results show a greater than 10% failure rate in a year, member states can submit those results to the QPL Subcommittee for Disqualification. However, absolutely nothing is said as to who will assume responsibility for damages as a result of the application of product that has failed. According to these Ohio House and Senate Bills, the Chief of the Division of Oil and Gas Resources Management is limited to taking only four samples of a brine product for use on roadways annually. There are too many loopholes related as a result of these Ohio House and Senate Bills. I highly encourage you to oppose these bills, and in addition to my comments, I'm submitting a research report by Dr. Daniel Bain of the University of Pittsburgh, Dr. John Stoltz of Duquesne University in Pittsburgh, published in November 2021 pertaining to today's topic. The most important sentence in the entire report reads, "If the maximum range of near road soil radium concentrations observed in the region is used in this residential scenario, residents living near these roads would be exposed to an estimated 296 millirems per year, which is above regulatory exposure thresholds used in nuclear facility siting assessments." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Will you let us know if you're going to enact it, or what, how you...
We're going to review it.
And how, when will you know?
Well, when we actually sit down to talk about it, review the documents. Understand, we'll take a look at it, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, discussion session, Scott? Jeremy? Let's see, Amy, you have anything? Okay, sure.
The one thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention is that we did receive from the Ohio Department of Development, the $100,000 set aside monies that they had allocated for Skip Sipos and the group for the consideration of the homeless shelter here in Medina County, so we'll present that grant agreement, or I will next week, on resolution for your approval to get that started.
Very good, thank you.
And then Stephen and I can update you on ARPA dollars. He's going to talk specifically about HVAC improvements, but let me pass out to you this spreadsheet that tells you what we've, what your board has already allocated and what we've earmarked. And then Stephen's going to take over.
Okay.
So, this is...
Are, are you going to have to...
So, so you're, you're spending a lot of time with a former sanitary engineer that likes these enormous spreadsheets.
You know, it's interesting, I made the comment today, if you look at my bag, I usually have no paperwork, I'm a paperless kind of guy, but today I have all kinds of papers, so I really feel like I'm following inter curtails, so. So, this is showing projects, so this is all of the equipment that we haven't discussed prior to today. We have talked about, like, the animal shelter essay and highway engineer about getting their HVAC equipment through ARPA dollars. What this is showing is all of the equipment in the years that these equipments were installed inside of these buildings, and so with the administration building, the auditorium, AHU units, the chiller here at this building, and then a few, I call them residential units, they're just smaller units throughout this building. The county home, we still have a residential unit that's out. The engineer center has three rooftop units that were installed in 2000. And as you go, work through all of these different things, as you can see, the most recent things we have is 2007, and the oldest things we have is, were installed in 1980. They have long lived their expected life in the HVAC world. With this being said, these are estimated costs that came from the same group we've been using for other budgetary, these are just cost estimates for them. The total with all of this would be anywhere from about $3.982 million to $4.5 million. I have allocated...
So, Stephen, just to clarify, so the two columns of their estimated cost, it's a, it's a low and...
Low and high.
Low and high.
Low and high, yep. I think some of it can be...
Didn't we already, is this the jail or, or is this different stuff for the jail?
This is different stuff, so we've done, we're currently doing a chiller and a boiler for backup controls, plus the air handling units for the three air handlers inside this building, also has six rooftop units accordingly as well, so the units that we've dealt with deals with most of the cooling, or the cooling that's throughout the building, but these deal with the heating and the cooling inside of the administration section of the jail. So, these are in addition to what we've already discussed prior. Again, that building was built in 1995, the Juvenile Detention Center was built in 1999, all of that equipment is still original to the buildings, and as we continue to move forward through the years, these, this equipment will continue to age, and we will have to replace it at some point in time. How we fund it is, is just a matter of course today. In the next columns, I've just kind of highlighted off, 2022, 2023, 2024, 25, and 26 is which when the ARPA dollars would have to be used by, they have to be uncovered by 2024. The green is basically saying that this should be covered under ARPA funding, as we are actually cleaning the air better, so the air purification on those are actually filtering the air that comes into the building. The peachy or the reddish looking color is things that are not, that is just simply cooling the water that is used, or heating the water that is used to heat and cool those sections. I've also split it off, the Xs are just basically what year, that if we divided all of that up throughout the four or five year, or the five years, that's what it comes out to be, so that's where we sit with things today.
I do have a question, there was talk, I thought Scott said maybe that next year's money may not be as high as this year's, is that still, or do we still not know?
I think the question is with the current state of events, you know, in the country that the, the federal government decides to either delay or not issue that same amount, but we've not heard anything official, it's, it's just, we'll know June, beginning of June is when we should receive that second tranche of money, so I would expect sometime within the next, you know, six weeks, well, in understanding of whether that's coming...
We have committed some of next year's crack for broadband?
Right, so if you look at the first sheet that was passed out, it shows that first subtotal award that lists the 9.6 million, that you'll see just up above that, there are a few items listed in red italics, those have been talked about, but not yet committed to by Commissioner Resolution. And then for the second, you know, there's the second installment for Medina Fiber, it was five and a half million year one, five and a half million year two, to get to that total of 11. And then down in the lower left-hand corner of the table, those are the other departments that had submitted requests. It's just the total, for example, Board of Elections had five small projects that tallied up to $133,000. The sanitary engineer had five projects that added up to several million dollars, Parks District had a couple, so those decisions haven't yet been made, we've not, had continued public discussion on those, but wanted to let you know that those were still out there as well. So, if, for example, you agreed to the healthcare reimbursement piece and the parking lot improvements related to stormwater at the jail, you would have awarded just shy of the 10 million you had in the five and a half that's already committed to for next year, you know, you, you're up at over 15 of that original 17 allocated. So, we wanted to bring to your attention these critical building projects, and you've got at least 2.3-ish million to play with if you wanted to put some attention more towards these HVAC improvement projects, or if we wanted to have some discussion on other priority items. And I know the Highway Garage was one that has come up in recent discussion on the timing of decisions, that they're going to need to make some investment in interim repairs if, if a decision's not made to go with a, a replacement type project. So, Stephen can talk a little bit more about that if you have questions specific to that, but he's got that listed in your 2022 column, I believe, on his table.
That's the one that's 580,000, correct?
That is correct, yeah, so that's...
I am fine with your 2022 allocations.
The highway engineers, they have had system failures on their air handling unit, so there's multiple pieces to that unit that is not functioning correctly. It would be, would be listed if we move forward with, that would be one of the first projects that should probably get done. I know it's a newer unit compared to some of these others, but that system is actually failing more so than others.
Did you want us to make decision on just 2022 for right now, or...
I would, um, no, I, I think the decision, I think this is a great discussion, I would just like to, you know, present it to you and say, this is what we're looking at as a, as a county, as we move forward throughout the years, and if we don't address it with this funding, that at some point in time, we'll have to address it with other types of funding.
Well, I know you made a couple, just a bit ago, about going ahead with the 22, and I'm, I'm in agreement.
The 2022, I would, I would plan for and go for.
Let's go ahead and...
It's, it's a need in our building, some of our buildings are very old and...
Yeah, and I know the, the second tranche is still at, at federal level, you know, it's just only been referred to, it's not, they're not making a decision. It was only because of the war in, with Ukraine and so forth, that they had made those, and some of that, I think, was directed at states who were trying to quickly draw down and spend it if they have any, any remaining, that's where they were looking first to go to the buckets for locals was, was a separate one, I think, but at least as I understand it, but I, at this point, I'm, I'm comfortable, we, we have enough, we have enough room, I think, in the 2022 for what we've already promised.
Do we have to do a resolution rescinding that, that one project that Jer, we took off Jer, yeah, okay, so we will do that soon, okay?
Okay, all right.
Scott, when the energy upgrades were done, back in 15 or 16?
14, 15.
Was it 14? They didn't replace the air handling units and anything in this building? Because they did the boilers and other things, didn't they?
We did, we did two boilers here in this building, we also did the two air handling units that serviced this entire building, except for, there are pieces of this building that are not under those air handlers, so the first floor on the three-story side is serviced by one air handler that's been replaced, and the second and third floors is serviced by a different air handler, that is also brand new. But like the coral room, we have the tax maps area, those are not under this roof here, it's almost like it's been in different stages, so...
Also the auditorium?
The auditorium also has, so the auditorium has...
Probably everything in that, that whole wing, was built afterwards, I guess.
That is correct, and it's actually, actually individual units that service different things, like the recorders office is serviced by a separate unit. We have one also in the west side of the building, I'm not sure what exactly that services, I'd have to look in more deeply of where that truly services, but there's an individual unit on the northwest side of this building as well.
Rooftop?
No, it's a, it's actually, half of it is inside of, um, um, links, Phoenice's area, and the other portion is actually under the stairs on the north side of the...
Is that where we used to have the servers? It used to be in the control room, next to that?
It's next to that, that is correct, yeah. So, I have two units that are sitting over there that, that are just individually branched units, that don't service much. We have a unit, even in this building, there's a couple smaller units that are running as well. We make up for it because we have so much air movement in the building, but there are definitely things that have not been looked at in this building, even from that energy upgrade, so the auditorium was never looked at, because the, the use of it was never there. I know we've had a lot of use of it over the weekends from the last couple of years, with Church Group, I think, has used it for a while, and then our showbiz is starting to start back up.
So, if we replace one of those two air handlers, that would be sufficient to...
We would change it out to a rooftop unit, so we would actually remove, yeah, we'd remove the two air handlers that are sitting about 30 feet in, in the air now, which we have trouble servicing, and we'd stick a rooftop on it, and then, yeah, and then...
Could one rooftop do the whole thing?
One rooftop will do the whole thing.
So, we can eliminate the other one?
That is correct, so if you look at this, there's actually...
That's part of the 2022, right?
Yeah, it is, and it actually eliminates, that number is for that specific purpose, that's why there's not numbers under both of those pieces.
Since it's already April, do you guys want to consider 2023s for his planning, or just want to go ahead with 2022 for right now?
Let's hold off, I guess, rather than today, we can take a look at that and then continue the discussions.
Okay.
Okay, be my preference, all right.
Any other questions?
So, Amy, if we approve that million dollars for 2022, um, that takes our 9.7 up to 10.7?
It does.
Okay.
And, and if you add the 5.5 to it, just because it's already committed for the fiber project, even though it's year two, you have that like 16 more of the 17, 5.
Right. Okay. Okay, very good, all right, thank you, all right. Holly, anything? All right, um, let's see. Bethany, did you want to come up, we wanted to talk about the Broadband Ohio Expansion Grants? I know you had sent us some information, and likewise, I had placed it within the packet the, or David, did you want to? Okay. With the, with the ranking, most recently, they announced the award of some grants to a number of communities as part of their expansion grant program. Apparently Medina Fiber, ELSI, did not fare well. We believe for erroneous information not provided to them, but that they used in the calculation of a scoring.
Well, just as a little background for the group here, last year, the state of Ohio and their budget passed a significant amount of money for broad, residential broadband expansion, but they specifically excluded public sector networks. As you know, we've been partnering with Medina Fiber, which is a 10% private sector network, and they have plans obviously to build out quite a bit of fiber, residential fiber in Medina County, but for purposes of applying for this grant, they focused on the Litchfield Township area, which is extremely underserved, even according to the state of Ohio's maps. And so, they submitted all the application, I believe it was due last fall, so they submitted the information, they had to provide some clarifying information about how many households would be served because they were currently underserved with fiber, and there are a significant number of households there. But when the scoring came out a couple of weeks ago, Medina Fiber was not on the list, so they scored too low because they didn't have enough underserved households, which made no sense. So, we've been trying to get some clarification from the state about why the scores are the way they are, and I don't know, the state did respond just with clarifying information about the scores, but not really a reason why.
Actually, they had, gave a zero for unserved households, and this was specifically for a project in Litchfield, which if you look at the map, it has huge areas of unserved and underserved individuals, households.
Exactly.
The state basically said that every household in Litchfield was sufficiently served.
Like you can see from their own map, this is from Broadband Ohio, this, this corner right here, which is all red, indicates that they're only getting zero to nine megabits per second download, which is unacceptable according to their own standards.
Who is in charge of the scoring?
Well, Broadband Ohio, I believe, was set up as a part of the Ohio Department of Development, which ran the grant program, so they have a director, and we had a contact there that we did provide, or that Medina Fiber provided clarifying information to.
They do have a committee that's supposed to oversee this, representative from the House, and the Senate, from, I think the governor has an appointment too, so, yeah, there's a number of individuals will sit on that.
And Medina Fiber did have clarification emails from the Department of Development prior to submitting their RFP response, that indeed Litchfield did contain unserved households. So, they have verification that to receive the zero, basically contradicts the email previously received from the Department that was scoring the RFP.
So, we suspect, and, and we don't know for sure, we suspect that there might be some false... false association of this project with a public sector network, and we wanted to try to get clarification, so the email that I copied you on was sent to all of our state legislators and to our representative from the governor's office to try to get an understanding and an explanation of why this score was the way it was. There may be some money left, I don't know, but we're hoping that they will regrade it and take a look at it, and if they did make a mistake because of faulty information or assumptions on their part, that they would recalculate it. I did get a call from Senator Romanchuk yesterday after he received the information, and he is going to be inquiring about an appeal process. So he's already working on that, I haven't heard from the others yet, but certainly hope to do that.
Yeah, the only appeal process I saw under the law was if a if a competing provider believes that you shouldn't be going into that area, they can they can actually object. And there's a process for that, but doesn't, what I saw, there was no appeal process for a wrong scorer.
You had talked about a competing provider objecting, is that true?
No, we, there was no competing.
Right, right, well, they have the opportunity, there's, I think, like a sixty or ninety day comment period, they can object under the law, and that, when I went to the website. When I went through the calculations and I had condensed the the spreadsheet, I think it was like a hundred and ninety some applications, but we showed the number, our, the cost per household to be served for our projects is forty nine hundred dollars. The average one, their funding out there with their various projects is eleven thousand seven hundred, and we're basically, we're looking for thirty nine percent of the total cost to be provided by the state.
Right, which is because Medina Fiber is putting in so much of their own investor money compared to all the other respondents who wanted mostly the entire project funded by the state.
Well, there's a category where we incorrectly scored zero, correct?
Yes.
I would just be surprised that there's no way to appeal an incorrect score, like the the data was inputted incorrect.
You know, some early conversation points to the fact that Medina Fiber is utilizing county backbone and therefore is using a government network. However, if you look at the response that was submitted to Litchfield, Medina Fiber was not awarded the ARPA RFP at that time that we are placing to expand our backbone up through Litchfield, so we have no backbone in Litchfield. Our RFP was subsequent to the state's RFP. So Medina Fiber had no association nor was using any of our backbone in Litchfield when they submitted the RFP to the state of Ohio, and therefore was at arms length from us and was not using any government assets, which would have precluded them from responding to the state.
And the state's own press release, which announced the the award winners have included a map that very clearly showed Litchfield as an area containing Ohioans without access to high-speed internet. So I think there's a reason.
So does that map correspond to the counties, the geographic locations that are listed on this sheet?
I didn't do that analysis, I was just focused on.
I think their website has another map showing where the the funded projects are at.
And there's a.
So when you look at the counties, and that's what I was doing, is looking at where some of them are, most of them seem to be in southeast Ohio.
A lot of them, yes, right.
Along the Ohio River, all the way down to toward Cincinnati, Belmont, Harrison, Monroe, Norwood.
Although here in, here in county to get.
Almost the overwhelming majority are in southeast Ohio.
Right, but there are, there are, I believe there are some in Cuyahoga County and some of counties, so there are, our neighboring counties did.
Well, Licking, Licking, Licking County, actually.
Huron, Huron County is on the list.
Licking County is where Intel going, you know, twenty billion dollar project, and I guess that they're underserved.
Yeah, Estebula received grants, Cuyahoga, Tioga.
But they tied them up with Muskegon.
Yeah, I know, that's right, okay.
So there were other northeast Ohio counties that received that penny.
Right, yeah, I think, but I think, thank you for pursuing this, obviously, we'll be pursuing it individually with our legislators as well on this one. I think we'll find out where the scoring was so convoluted.
Absolutely.
Yeah, very good.
Thanks.
So, and it also looks like they did not fund any public-private.
Yep. Right, no, they, according to.
I don't know what JB Nets is, but all the rest of them, mostly spectrum, wind stream.
Right, their their own roles have disallowed public sector participation in the project.
And public-private quasi or governmental entities were excluded from the two hundred different.
But as I said, this this network is completely owned by the private sector and should have been considered.
Right, well, as you know, when the the bill originally went through, I was in opposition to that exclusion in the House, so.
All right, well, we'll keep posted on what we get.
All right, thank you, thank you, all right. Anyone else, discussion session? John, do you have anything? All right, Bill?
I do not.
Colleen?
Scott and I attended a meeting Wednesday regarding Heatherhedge property, and he's going to proceed with steps to talk to the architect about the remodel. Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we met with the Christina and Sheriff Grace and some of the EMA board members, and we decided to go ahead and move forward with the renovations at Heatherhedge, so contacted the architect that Christina had originally contacted and talked to him, he was interested in doing the project for renovations. So we were actually meeting out there today at two o'clock to walk through the facility and to have Christina talk about what renovation she would like made. Once that is done, the architect will put together some kind of a conceptual plan, I would think, and then come up with some kind of a estimated cost. And once we have the estimated cost, the decision can be made to whether to move forward or not with that project.
And this, to be clear, is more of a remodel than what was talked about before as far as a complete extension of the building.
So does it involve the sewer line, or that we're not doing that?
No, it would be completely internal to the to the building itself. So there would be no, no addition going out or going up in the building, we'd just be remodeling it, so. So we are moving forward with that, and like I said, once we have all the information, we'll come back to the board and see if we want to proceed.
All right.
So and I think EMA, they do have funding through, they received some monies from Nexus several years ago that will be used for it, and then obviously, they've got the capital grant that can also be used for your renovations, so.
Okay, very good, all right, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I don't have anything else. We do have a request for executive session.
I will make a motion to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes, we're going to executive session, and when we return, I don't imagine any other action, and have a good day if you don't join us afterwards.
Can you bring one copy? Please, you can have a copy here.
I'm Commissioner Steve Hambley, a board, a president of the Board of Commissioners, and this is an important celebration. When we, there were a lot of milestones when it comes to buildings, and a number of things we came to, last time we came to all together to celebrate the groundbreaking, and that's some significance there because it involves you taking ideas and making them into reality. It's kind of like our humanity, we're from dust and we're turned to dust, same thing with buildings, they're made from the earth and eventually they return, so that that initial, but in that you're kind of celebrating that the ideas turned into reality, but this, the topping off ceremony is another celebration. And I know in the program, Brian, and they did a very good job kind of talking about the history, and I know we hear about it, but really, it's a celebration, I think best, of the workers. This is a celebration of the workers, what they've done. When we look at the craftsmen out there, the tradesmen, the people, they've done the heavy lifting. This is the superstructure that's going to remain, that builds upon that foundation that was established in the groundbreaking, and that's the next best, I'll say, milestone. George Voinavich, as some of you may remember, was, he was basically, he was governor, senator, but also he was mayor of the city of Cleveland, and I know a person who was close to him told me once that the, that Voinavich never went to groundbreakings. He really hated going to groundbreakings because those are just promises and ideas, and yeah, you go ahead. The important milestones he said he reportedly went to were topping off ceremonies because that's the work that's getting done, and of course, ribbon cuttings. Ribbon cuttings is where it's open to the public, and the purpose of the building is established, and then it's unfolded as to how that building is used. Those were his two favorite things when it came to buildings, and I think that we'll kind of continue that tradition. The most important thing we're doing is recognizing all the hard work. With us today, we have Commissioner Bill Hudson will say a few words, Commissioner Colleen Sweattick will reflect the county commissioners who made the commitment on behalf of the public, likewise, and overseeing the design and working with all the parties, as I was taking that idea to reality, and also, and seeing that the workers here, that they were supplied, that what, everything we could do to help provide support for them so that the people that are engaged and the organizations are engaged, they're actually accomplishing a whole lot, and we're going to celebrate that. And then we have with us Judge Dunn, who represents actually one of the purposes here. This is this house, this purposes, this is a house of justice, this is the court of justice, this is where people will come to seek equity. They will come and hopefully find the equity they deserve, the justice they deserve. We have with us also Sharon Ray, Sharon Ray, who's our state representative, where the state provides the laws that the judge will be liable to apply to specific circumstances. So here we have people for, with us today to say a few words and talk about the purpose of this great, great structure. And of course, with us, Mayor Hanwell, who represents the community that houses this. This is our, this is the capital of, or our city, where our city is based, where our county is based, where the functions of this courthouse will be, and of course, the support of the community that is embedded in all of this and involved in in all these various functions. And with that, I'll turn over the microphone to my colleague, Bill Hudson, to say a few words, but I just want to thank you all, thanks to all the workers and everybody that's engaged in on this great enterprise, and thank you so much for the workers that have done this so well that we get that final beam in, and from here, it's just filling in the blanks. So I'll give that over to Bill Hudson now, thank you.
Good afternoon. What we have going up behind us, in front of you all, is an example of collaboration and teamwork. This project has been contemplated for well over twenty years. I've been working on it myself for four or five years. There were many times when I questioned whether it would actually take place. I had a lot of conversations with Councilman Lamb, and we worked through a lot of differences successfully. There's been a many, many individuals, many, many companies and partners that have come together to make this happen, and I appreciate it, I think it is a great asset for Medina County and will serve the county for many years to come, so thank you.
I'm lowering refresh, you're in. I'd like to say thank you to a couple of significant people. Of course, I'd like to thank the architects and the construction team, you're doing a wonderful job, and I really appreciate it, but I do think there's three significant people on this project that have worked so hard, put in so many hours and so many meetings, and really behind the scenes, put their heart and soul into this project, and that is Commissioner Hudson, he has spearheaded the project, Scott Miller and Stephen Bastian, they have worked endless hours on this project, and they deserve a lot of kudos, and I just really appreciate all of their work, thank you very much.
I just came here today because I'd like to celebrate and congratulate this momentous achievement. Construction projects are notoriously difficult, the planning is laborious, they're expensive, they're inconvenient, but you guys have all made it happen and quite honestly, produced a courthouse that will be functional and beautiful for the Medina County citizens for decades to come. And I am so excited to see this day. We got as far as the parking deck when I was here, we couldn't bring it home, but you guys did it, and congratulations to all of you.
I'm Judge Dunn, I'm the judge of the probate and the juvenile court here at the Common Police Court. On behalf of myself and Judge Collier and Judge Kimbler and our departed Judge Mary Kovak, this is an incredible day for us. When I came into office, this was something that was always considered and something that we never thought would come, and I could tell you that a lot of people have put their hearts and their souls, their efforts into this project through numerous countless drawings, representations, going back and forth and working with people to come up with solutions that will hopefully take our county to a place that you won't have to be doing upgrades every couple of years, we won't have cases being, not being able to be heard because we have HVAC issues, all those kinds of things that we suffer through. This building should do the trick. I would like to thank the county commissioners for having the foresight and the willingness to pursue this project. The county administrator, Scott Miller, Steve Bastin, who is the maintenance supervisor, are integrally involved in this. They've been so kind to even allow us to get space to tape out what we'd like for our courtrooms. That individual sharing with us has been invaluable. We hope to take this building, we're trying to build it for the future so that changes and judges as we come and go, and while I'm well out of here and my grandkids are in this county, this building will be, still be useful and being operable in a fashion that will keep the people of Medina County safe and secure. The building would be wonderful and be able to use for a lot of different purposes, but for a system that we need justice, I think will instill confidence in the public that we're doing the right thing. And I can say this from my perspective, I couldn't be happier, starting off with drawings that were handed to me my first day in office, and to where we are now. And those original drawings were scrapped, a whole process has come together, and I think this will do great things for our community. The costs of this have been fabulous. I can't say enough for the contracting group, the architects suffering through with our numerous changes, and the steel workers are out here, I've never seen guys crank a building up this fast in my life, and quite frankly, we're going to be in this building this time next year, and I'm looking forward to having another discussion with you. So on behalf of all the courts, personnel, all the folks that are going to be using this building, we're very thankful for you, and we look to do our best for you in the future. Thank you.
So on behalf of the city of Medina, I'm honored to be here, along with three of our seven council members, Council at Large Bill Lamb, Ward One Counselress Jess Hazelton, and Ward Three Counselwoman Reggie Hare. Joe Saucegiver is a clerk of our municipal courts, he's he's here from the city as well. I'd personally like to thank Scott Miller and the Board of County Commissioners for your tenacity, your hard work, and the ability to get this court built. As as was mentioned, the city and the county have been working together to resolve our court issues for over two decades. This is the start of a safe, effective, and efficient courtroom, and the city is very pleased that you kept it on the square, because that was important to the city, to have it on the square for the vitality of our square, not only for all the workers here, but for everybody that that comes to the court. And we hope that this is going to last, the previous building lasted over fifty years, we're hoping this lasts fifty plus, and the design, the ability is is going to make that happen. And last but not least, I can't walk away without saying, it remains my hope and prayer that the municipal court ends up being in the nineteen sixty-nine building, and we will then have the majority of all courts in Medina County at one location for the benefit of the public. With that, that concludes all the speechifying, so I guess now is to raise the beam, right? So I guess now is to raise the beam, right? Thank you very much for coming out for this topping ceremony. I'm Commissioner Steve Hambley, President of the Board of Commissioners. And this is an important celebration. When we, there were a lot of milestones when it comes to buildings. And number of things we came to get, last time we came all together to celebrate the groundbreaking. And that's some significance there because it involves you taking ideas and making them into reality. It's kind of like our humanity, we're from dust and will return to dust. Same thing with buildings, they're made from the earth and eventually they return. So, that initial. But now you're kind of celebrating that the ideas turned into reality. But this, the topping off ceremony is another celebration. And I know in the program, Brian, they did a very good job kind of talking about the history and I know we hear about it. But really, it's a celebration, I think best, of the workers. This is a celebration of the workers, what they've done. When we look at the craftsmen out there, the tradesmen, the people, they've done the heavy lifting. This is the superstructure that's going to remain, that builds upon that foundation that was established in the groundbreaking. And that's the next best, I'll say milestone. George Voinavich, if some of you may remember, he was basically governor, senator, but also he was mayor of the city of Cleveland. And I know a person who was close to him told me once that Voinavich never went to groundbreakings. He really hated going to groundbreakings because those are just promises and ideas and yeah, you go ahead. The important milestones, he said he reportedly went to were topping off ceremonies because that's the work that's getting done. And of course, ribbon cuttings. Ribbon cuttings is where it's open to the public and the purpose of the building is established. And then as it's unfolded as to how that building is used. So those were his two favorite things when it came to buildings. And I think that we'll kind of continue that tradition. The most important thing we're doing is recognizing all the hard work. With us today, we have Commissioner Bill Hudson will say a few words. Commissioner Colleen Sweattick will reflect the county commissioners who made the commitment on behalf of the public. Likewise, overseeing the design and working with all the parties as I was taking that idea to reality and also and seeing that the workers here, that they were supplied, everything we could do to help provide support for them so that the people that are engaged and the organizations are engaged, they're actually accomplishing a whole lot. And we're going to celebrate that. And then we have with us Judge Dunn, who represents actually one of the purposes here. This is this house, this purpose is, this is a house of justice. This is the court of justice. This is where people will come to seek equity. They will come and hopefully find the equity they deserve, the justice they deserved. We have with us also Sharon Ray. Sharon Ray, who's our state representative, where the state provides the laws that the judge will be looking to apply to specific circumstances. So here we have people with us today to say a few words and talk about the purpose of this great, great structure. And of course, with us Mayor Hanwell, who represents the community that houses this. This is our, this is the capital of our city, where our city is based, where our county is based, where the functions of this courthouse will be. And of course, the support of the community that is embedded in all of this and involved in all these various functions. And with that, I'll turn over the microphone to my colleague, Bill Hudson, to say a few words. But I just want to thank you all. Thank to all the workers and everybody that's engaged in this great enterprise. And thank you so much for the workers that have done this so well that we get that final beam in. And from here, it's just filling in the blanks. So I'll give that over to Bill Hudson now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. What we have going up behind us, in front of you all, is an example of collaboration and teamwork. This project has been contemplated for well over 20 years. I've been working on it myself for four or five years. There were many times when I questioned whether it would actually take place. I had a lot of conversations with Councilman Lamb and we worked through a lot of differences successfully. There's been many, many individuals and many, many companies and partners that have come together to make this happen. And I appreciate it. I think it is a great asset for Medina County and will serve the county for many years to come. So, thank you.
Lowing refresh urine. I'd like to say thank you to a couple of significant people. Of course, I'd like to thank the architects and the construction team, doing a wonderful job and I really appreciate it. But I do think there's three significant people on this project that have worked so hard, put in so many hours and so many meetings and really behind the scenes, put their heart and soul into this project. And that is Commissioner Hudson, he has spearheaded the project. Scott Miller and Stephen Bastian. They have worked endless hours on this project and they deserve a lot of kudos. And I just really appreciate all of their work. Thank you very much.
I just came here today because I'd like to celebrate and congratulate this momentous achievement. Construction projects are notoriously difficult. The planning is laborious, they're expensive, they're inconvenient. But you guys have all made it happen and quite honestly, produced a courthouse that will be functional and beautiful for the Medina County citizens for decades to come. And I am so excited to see this day. We got as far as the parking deck when I was here. We couldn't bring it home, but you guys did it and congratulations to all of you.
I'm Judge Dunn. I'm the judge of the probate and the juvenile court here at the Common Police Court. On behalf of myself and Judge Collier and Judge Kimbler and our departed Judge Mary Kovak. This is an incredible day for us. When I came into office, this was something that was always considered and something that we never thought would come. And I could tell you that a lot of people have put their hearts and their souls, their efforts into this project through numerous countless drawings, representations, going back and forth and working with people to come up with solutions that will hopefully take our county to a place that you won't have to be doing upgrades every couple of years. We won't have cases not being able to be heard because we have HVAC issues, all those kinds of things that we suffer through. This building should do the trick. I would like to thank the county commissioners for having the foresight and the willingness to pursue this project. The county administrator, Scott Miller, Steve Bastian, who is the maintenance supervisor are integrally involved in this. They've been so kind to even allow us to get space to tape out what we'd like for our courtrooms. That individual sharing with us has been invaluable. We hope to take this building, we're trying to build it for the future so that changes and judges as we come and go and while I'm well out of here and my grandkids are in this county, this building will still be useful and being operable in a fashion that will keep the people of Medina County safe and secure. The building will be wonderful and be able to use for a lot of different purposes. But for a system that we need justice, I think will instill confidence in the public that we're doing the right thing. And I can say this from my perspective, I couldn't be happier starting off with drawings that were handed to me my first day in office and to where we are now. And those original drawings were scrapped, a whole process has come together and I think this will do great things for our community. The costs of this have been fabulous. I can't say enough for the contracting group, the architects suffering through with our numerous changes. And the steel workers are out here, I've never seen guys crank a building up this fast in my life. And quite frankly, we're going to be in this building this time next year and I'm looking forward to having another discussion with you. So, on behalf of all the court personnel, all the folks that are going to be using this building, we're very thankful for you and we look to do our best for you in the future. Thank you.
So on behalf of the city of Medina, I'm honored to be here along with three of our seven council members. Council at large, Bill Lamb, Ward one, Councilwoman Jess Hazelton, and Ward three, Councilwoman Reggie Hare. Joe Saucegiver is a clerk of our municipal courts. He's here from the city as well. I'd personally like to thank Scott Miller and the Board of County Commissioners for your tenacity, your hard work and the ability to get this court built. As was mentioned, the city and the county have been working together to resolve our court issues for over two decades. This is the start of a safe, effective and efficient courtroom. And the city is very pleased that you kept it on the square. Because that was important to the city, to have it on the square for the vitality of our square. Not only for all the workers here, but for everybody that comes to the court. And we hope that this is going to last, the previous building lasted over 50 years. We're hoping this lasts 50 plus. And the design, the ability is going to make that happen. And last but not least, I can't walk away without saying, it remains my hope and prayer that the municipal court ends up being in the 1969 building. And we will then have the majority of all courts in Medina County at one location for the benefit of the public. God bless. With that, that concludes all the speechifying. So I guess now is to raise the beam, right? Thank you very much for coming out for this topping ceremony. I'm Commissioner Steve Hambley, President of the Board of Commissioners. And this is an important celebration. When we, there were a lot of milestones when it comes to buildings. And number of things we came to get, last time we came all together to celebrate the groundbreaking. And that's some significance there because it involves you taking ideas and making them into reality. It's kind of like our humanity, we're from dust and will return to dust. Same thing with buildings, they're made from the earth and eventually they return. So, that initial. But now you're kind of celebrating that the ideas turned into reality. But this, the topping off ceremony is another celebration. And I know in the program, Brian, they did a very good job kind of talking about the history and I know we hear about it. But really, it's a celebration, I think best, of the workers. This is a celebration of the workers, what they've done. When we look at the craftsmen out there, the tradesmen, the people, they've done the heavy lifting. This is the superstructure that's going to remain, that builds upon that foundation that was established in the groundbreaking. And that's the next best, I'll say milestone. And that's the next best, I'll say, milestone. George Voinovich, as some of you may remember, he was basically governor, senator, but also he was mayor of the city of Cleveland. I know a person who was close to him told me once that Voinovich never went to groundbreakings. He really hated going to groundbreakings because those are just promises and ideas, and yeah, you go ahead. The important milestones, he said he reportedly went to, were topping-off ceremonies because that's the work that's getting done, and of course, ribbon cuttings. Ribbon cuttings is where it's open to the public, and the purpose of the building is established, and then it's unfolded as to how that building is used. So those were his two favorite things when it came to buildings, and I think that we'll kind of continue that tradition. The most important thing we're doing is recognizing all the hard work. With us today, we have-
We're back. It is 11 o'clock from executive session.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Move in a second. Roll call, please.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Everybody have a good week.
Thank you. All right.
Next week we need to also, executive session for the labor negotiations.
Okay.
Okay.
Six.
Yep.
I really do-